They have on the way down to Biggs Field, which is where they crock and crosses the whole system crosses the railroad tracks. And right down there, they had the actually had their plant and then they have to get onto the freeway. It's kind of a, it's like an odd place for us. But I mean, they think getting access to both sides of the freeway probably would be a little scary about how they have to get on the front of the freeway.
It is a whole thing.
Quite as long a list, but we're using this list of, you know, stuff, that all the way back.
Yeah. She didn't, they didn't need to make the whole thing for us, they could have just given us that part of it.
Yeah, that's why they did that.
Next year we'll take turns.
Cool.
I mean, percentage wise, that's good.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you for joining us on the final day of April of 2013. I hope all of you are enjoying this record heat as well as I am. It's fantastic. Great to have so many folks here this morning, and I know the reason why you're here is because of the service award presentations, and that's a great thing that the county does, and we're so honored to have everyone with us this morning. We're going to begin the morning with a pledge of allegiance, followed by the moment of silence, and we will be led by our supervisor from District Four, Steve Worthley.
Thank you, Chairman. Ready? Salute.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. Well, we have several county employees that are working towards this, and maybe they will, hopefully they will get there someday, but our first item on the agenda today is item number one, and that's to recognize Chief Ted Mendoza from the Fire Department upon his retirement and many years of county service. So right now, I would like to call up Chief Joe Garcia to make a few comments to Chief Mendoza, and then we will follow that up with a presentation of the plaque and some photos, and we'll move on with the service awards.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the boards, C O, County Council. I'm glad to be here today to witness the board recognizing Chief Ted Mendoza for his many years of service, not only to the citizens of Tulare County, but as well to the citizens of the state of California. Chief Mendoza will have 39 years in the fire service arena, which is quite exemplary. He actually started his career as a seasonal firefighter with C D F at that point in time, which is now known as CalFire, and progressed through the ranks, working in various counties in his career. From, from nineteen, let's see here, from 1989 to 1999, he actually worked here in Tulare County and served the citizens of California for 10 years while working for C D F as in various positions, if you will, including Battalion Chief of various areas, Pixley, and so consequently, in 2006, when you folks decided to form the Tulare County Fire Department, he was one of the individuals that was chosen as being instrumental and being a master of his craft in operations, and came to work as a Fire Division Chief for Tulare County Fire Department. He has been indispensable to the former Fire Chief as he has been indispensable to me. He has spent 10 years working with CalFire in Tulare County, and he spent seven years working with the new Tulare County Fire Department in many, many areas that allowed us to not only develop, not only create, but develop the Fire Department to the degree that it has become. So consequently, he has 32 years with CalFire and seven years with Tulare County Fire Department, but I can tell you that when we speak about somebody leaving and we say that they're going to be irreplaceable, for the most part, many times, that is just an idiom that we use, words that we say. In this particular case, he is a man of many talents, and he will be, truly be irreplaceable. So, thank you for the honor that you bestow on him.
Thank you very much, Chief, for your presentation, and I'd like to now call Chief Mendoza to come up and join us here in the front, and I will present him with his plaque.
You know, it's pretty rare that I feel underdressed, but you guys sure put yourselves together real nice. I feel underdressed in these chambers only very rarely, and that's typically because I have a fat neck and go with just a sport coat and no tie, and all these guys wear ties. So it's sure nice to stand next to you fine-looking gentlemen this morning to present you with this plaque and county seal in recognition of your service to the county. Now, I figured I would mention this before my colleagues have the chance, but 39 years is a really long time. I don't even know that length of time yet, but I'm really, really proud to say that I proudly represent you, as I know you live in Tulare, and it's been really a pleasure to work with you and really learn so much about the Fire Department and what they do because of your willingness to share with me and be a part of our roles as supervisors in representing the communities and the role of the Fire Department. And I really appreciate all the time and effort that you put in, and I hope that this will be more than a coaster to you and will be hung on your wall proudly, and may really the best years of your life be ahead of you, Chief, because 39 years is a long time, but you don't look old enough yet to just sit on a couch and do nothing. So may the best years of your life truly be ahead of you. Thank you.
There you go.
All right.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief.
If anyone wants to comment, you can go ahead.
Chairman, if I might, Ted, before you leave the building, I guess as sort of the class historian here, since I'm one that was around, we created a new Fire Department, and I remember Chief Sonnen, you were high on his list to come onboard, is helping form the new Fire Department, which has been an unparalleled success. And I personally want to thank you for being the interim chief after Chief Sonnen retired and before our current chief came onboard. You were very helpful to us and not afraid to speak your mind, and I very much appreciate your friendship, your candor, and your service to Tulare County and to the people of Tulare County and to the state of California. And I too wish you the very best in your years ahead. Thank you very much.
Ted, last Friday evening, we swore in six new lieutenants for the County Fire Department, which prompted me to look on my wall and look up the date of when the fire, when we swore all the new Fire Department in, and it'll be six years in June. And in that short period of time, and you started even before we had a Fire Department, but in that short period of time, I can say with, I'm sure with the rest of the board supervisors, we're darn proud of what you've accomplished and our County Fire Department has accomplished in that short period of time. We're certainly going to miss you. I want to say that you're really a class act, so best of luck to you in the future.
Chairman, well, gosh, time flies, doesn't it? Of course, I can remember back to, like Supervisor Ashida was saying, I went to the, when we had the testing out there at the Newcombe Station, Fire Station in Porterville, City Fire Station, we had the testing, was seeing what you guys really do and seeing what, how the shape you've got to be in, I mean, to me, it's amazing. It really is amazing to watch these guys train and do all the things that they do. So I really appreciate your efforts in putting this County Fire Department together. I think you were a big part of that, and you're a great guy and really enjoyed working with you over the years, talking to you. You've got a lot of knowledge in that head, so keep going forward and keep yourself busy. I know you will, but thanks again for all your service. You are very well appreciated by this supervisor and I know by this board. Thank you.
One of the things I know is rare is to be able to be a part of creating a new fire company, a new Fire Department, and we were, we are the recipients of all of your many years of knowledge, being able to come in and work with that original team who put our Fire Department together. Job well done, and enjoy your retirement. Thank you.
Absolutely. Sure, Chief, absolutely. Sorry for, sorry for not giving you that opportunity earlier. Just go ahead and grab the microphone and pull it towards you. There you go.
I'm not sure which way to face. Face you or face the audience. Supervisors, thank you very much. First of all, I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to serve here in Tulare County. I want to thank you for that period of time that I served as your interim Fire Chief. Thank you for putting your trust in me, but I can tell you that it was really pretty easy, and I'll tell you why. It wasn't because of my skills or talents. You have, I'm leaving, okay? I'm not promoting, I'm not, I don't want, Jake, I don't need a discount, I'm not building anything. I'm not looking for anything, but you need to hear from people that have no vested interest. There's a world of information out here, world of cooperation, world of teamwork that goes on between all the departments. I, I did serve you in all the capacities that I served here from 1989 until 2000, I left just before the Y-2K deal happened, I went to Fresno to work. So I worked in, but in each one of those capacities, I was serving Tulare County as a Pixley Battalion Chief, as your Communications Chief, dispatching both state and county resources, in the Woodlake Battalion where I was overseeing the Ivanhoe Fire Station along with the volunteers at Woodlake and up at Badger. So in all of my capacities, I always served Tulare County in one way or another, but never then did I ever interact as much with the other county departments as I did now, obviously because we have more personnel, we had a greater budget responsibility and other things. But all of the folks out here, the people from I T, the people from R M A Roads Department, there were concerns in the beginning about how things would work at the R M A Road Yard because there were some suspicions that the fire mechanics, the equipment was always beautiful and running, and there would be downtime, and they'd be sitting around having coffee while the other mechanics were working. And we, Steve Nolan and I were able to work through all those things, and time and time again, every office I ever worked with, you have great cooperative people, and they are what made our job easy, they are what made us able to get the department to where it went. It wasn't by ourselves. Gene Rousseau and all the support that he's given us. He has limited dollars, he helps his best he can with what he can do, but they have, just like you have, and so with all that said, I don't want to take up any more air time except to say thank you all very much, and all the friends that I've made in the other departments, thank all of you. I'm sorry, I can't mention everybody because we're limited for time, but thank you all.
Great job, Chief. You will definitely be missed, and I think that's a fantastic segue to the next item on our agenda, which is our service award presentations. We do have so many great people, and this is one day each year, well, it actually happens two separate days because it's two separate weeks, we can't get everyone in at one meeting, but very special days for us as a board to recognize the employees in Tulare County that are dedicated and committed not only to serving the constituents of Tulare County, but being a part of Tulare County. You are really the face of who we are, and you make this county possible and you make this county function. So with that, I would like to turn it over to Mr. Cardell to run the service award presentations.
Well, good morning, Chairman and members of the board. It gives me great pleasure today to assist you with recognizing employees for their long service and dedication to the county. As you know, the service award program recognizes employees who have completed 10 or more years of continuous service during the prior calendar year. We honor these employees for their loyalty, their hard work, and their, and the valuable continuity and historical memory they provide to their departments and the citizens of this county. Awards for employees who have completed 10 years of service are presented within their respective employees' departments. Today, beginning with 15 years of service and for completion of each five years of additional service, the boards are, the awards are presented by your board. Today, we will be recognizing 47 employees who possess over 900 years of service in the county.
Wow.
Twenty-five of today's awards are for 15 years of service. Nine are for 20 years, eight for 25 years, one for 30, three for 35 years, and we have one for 40 years of service to Tulare County. Recipients, as your name is called today, please come forward to receive your award, and our staff will assist you with collecting your award, and the supervisors will be coming up by district to give you your, or provide you with your award as well. We'll start with District One and Supervisor Ashida. So, we will start with Betsy Ellis from the Health and Human Services Agency. Betsy has indicated that she's all about her family. She's been married for 11 years and has a seven-year-old boy. She enjoys dirt bike riding, water skiing, and camping. Congratulations. Our next recipient for 15 years of service, also from H H S A, is Sean Graves. Sean? Sean has indicated that he's published two books. I'd like to know more about that. He's a proud parent of four children, two daughters-in-law, and has two grandsons. She, sorry. Our next recipient this morning is John Lee from the District Attorney's Office with 15 years of service. John has previously worked 13 years in the Sheriff's Department, has most recently joined the DA's office a couple of years ago. He enjoys scuba diving and was the 2007 Sexual Assault Investigator of the Year. From H H S A, celebrating 20 years of service, Anita Vivian. Anita is a recent graduate of our supervisory academy. She indicates that she's very proud of her parents who were farmworkers. They provided her the best education by teaching respect and a strong work ethic. Congratulations, Anita. Celebrating 25 years of service from H H S A, Melissa Powell. Melissa has indicated that she enjoys crafts, specifically scrapbooking and quilting, making hats for cancer patients as well. She's the grandmother of a nine-year-old and a six-year-old as well. Her supervisor indicates that she makes great contributions to the unit. Congratulations, Melissa. Celebrating 25 years of service, Christine Ward from H H S A. Christine recently took a three-week car tour of the East Coast. She's been married for 32 years to her wonderful husband and is the proud mommy to David, Anna Ann Grady. Celebrating 35 years of service from the Resource Management Agency, Roger Hunt. Roger began his service with Tulare County as an extra help engineering aide in 1972. He's been married for 32 years, and his first grandchild was born in November of last year. District Two. We begin in District Two with Daniel Biggs from H H S A. Daniel's celebrating 15 years of service, has an Associate of Arts degree in social science, and is also a State Park docent. Congratulations, Daniel. Also celebrating 15 years of service in H H S A, Efron Rodriguez. He's been assigned to Tulare Works since 1999. He enjoys cycling, skiing, and hunting. He's been recognized as a valuable asset and a team player. Congratulations, Efron. Also celebrating 15 years of service is Rosio Rodriguez. Rosio loves to bake and also likes to read. She has three kids that are her world. Her supervisor says that for more than 10 years, in all the years she's been a joyful employee. Also celebrating 15 years of service, Clemencia Shear. Okay. Clemencia has one year of college. She has a certificate of excellence. It's okay. She enjoys volleyball, softball, and spending time with her family. Congratulations, Clemencia. Also celebrating 15 years of service, Marco Valenzuela. Is Marco here? Oh, there he is, okay. Okay. Marco is, enjoys teaching kids boxing and is a proud parent of his first daughter in July 2011. Elke Smith, also celebrating 15 years of service. In 2008, Elke took and passed the California Department of Veteran Affairs Accreditation Exam. She's a proud grandparent of two wonderful grandsons, one-year-old and six-year-old. One more for District Two, Vidalina Mendonca, Mendonca. Celebrating 35 years of service. She indicates that her hobbies are riding motorcycle with her husband and friends and enjoying going to different lakes on boats. Her supervisor indicates that she's a hard-working employee who exemplifies detail work and the ability to follow through on assigned tasks. Congratulations. So in District Three, we're celebrating cumulatively over 360 years of county service. And beginning with Amelia Armis, celebrating 15 years of service. She currently works as a Senior Account Clerk in General Services. She received Employee of the Month in December 2010 and is the Secretary of the Tulare County Latino Rotary. Congratulations. Also celebrating 15 years of service, Guy Christian. Guy used, Guy used to work in the fraud unit in the DA's office, is the President of the California Welfare Fraud Investigators Association, has four children, 11 grandchildren, and is a great, will be a great-grandfather in seven months. Congratulations. The next recipient for 15 years of service is Melissa Cohen. In 2000, Melissa obtained her psychology license and worked as a psychologist, too. She's worked as a conservative, conservatorship investigator for the county. Also celebrating 15 years of service, Margie Flores from Health and Human Services Agency. Also celebrating 15 years of service, Sheila Howland. Sheila's the grandmother of eight and a great-grandmother of one. She's also the most highly productive, organized, and dedicated, one of the most highly productive, organized, and dedicated employees at the Visalia Adult Clinic. From the DA's office, Jennifer Lightfoot is celebrating 15 years of service. She has a bachelor's degree in criminal justice, a paralegal certificate, and is a certified crisis responder through the National Organization of Victim Assistance. She's been married for 12 years and has two children. Congratulations. Carolyn Wrench is also celebrating 15 years of service. She's indicated she enjoys reading, gardening, being with her pets, and going to plays with friends. Celebrating 15 years of service, Lori Welch. Lori enjoys music, reading, teaching Sunday School, and assisting clients. Her supervisor indicates that she's a team player, has shown a dedication to clients we serve and inspires that in her staff. Celebrating 20 years of service, Kristen Bennett. Kristen began her employment in 1992 as an administrative analyst. She's been commended by the board for completing construction of facilities on time and under budget, including the Tulare County Youth Facility, Juvenile Detention Facility, the New Justice Facility, and Tulare County Ag Building. She was recently appointed the Department Head for the Capital Projects and Facilities Department. Mona McCann is celebrating 20 years of service as well. Mona has a bachelor's degree in journalism and public relations. She loves to travel, mainly to visit her grandchildren. Congratulations. Umaro Ortiz is celebrating 20 years of service. He's completed the Tulare County Supervisory Academy and is a proud parent of five children and nine grandchildren. He loves vacationing in Las Vegas with his wife. Celebrating 25 years of service, Joel Martins. Joel is a registered environmental health specialist, a registered hazardous substances professional, a California U S T inspector, and a hazmat technician. He's been recognized for outstanding environmental leadership. 25 years of service, Tim Mathis. Tim has a B S in accounting from Fresno State, go dogs. He's often found in the office break room, leading a group, singing in kumbaya, and discussing the benefits of working for Tulare County. Congratulations, Tim. Keep up the good work. Anne Marie Sparks, celebrating 25 years of service. She's a self-sufficiency supervisor. Her supervisor indicates that she is dedicated to serving the residents of Tulare County. Her supervisor indicates that she is dedicated to serving the residents of Tulare County as a team player, works hard, and is a pleasure to work with. Celebrating 30 years of service, Eric Velazquez. Eric actually began his career in the Sheriff's Department and is now currently with the District Attorney's Office as an investigator. He's worked in assignments such as jail, patrol, SWAT, narcotics, and clandestine lab team in violent crimes. Celebrating 35 years of service, Roxana Ross. Currently works as a Program Specialist for IHSS. She enjoys reading and bicycle riding. Celebrating 40 years of service to the county, Jim Waters from HHSA.
What the 40-year gift looks like.
Jim has been the Environmental Quality Division Coordinator since 1990. Prior to that, he worked for Environmental Health Division for 18 years, has a Master's Degree in Biological Science, and is a Registered Environmental Health Specialist. He's been blessed with a wonderful family. We'll now be recognizing employees who reside in District Four. With 15 years of service, Leonard Encinas Jr. Leonard is the proud father of four wonderful children and so enthused with his granddaughter, Harley. Supervisor indicates that he's been an asset to the unit and has made his job as a supervisor a lot easier. Also celebrating 15 years of service, Olga Garabey. Olga has worked for Tulare Works in Lindsay, Dinuba, Visalia, and the Processing Center. She loves cake decorating and floral arrangements. She's a proud mother of three and grandmother of one. Also celebrating 15 years of service from the Sheriff's Department, Harold Lilis. He started his career in 1997. He's completed the Sherman Block Leadership Academy in 2012 and received certification as a Narcotics Expert and Clandestine Lab Expert. Betty Scruggs, also celebrating 15 years of service, has her Master's in Social Work. Her supervisor asks, says, "Thank you for your hard work and dedication in the field Celebrating 15 years of service as well is Jaime Zuniga. Jaime has worked all 15 years at Tulare Works Division of the county and has been the Volunteer of the Year for the Dinuba Police Department. Nabor Gomez is celebrating 20 years of service. He's a proud parent of a career serviceman in the United States Air Force, greatly enjoys working for the county. His supervisor indicates that the energy with which he approaches every day serves Also celebrating 20 years of service, Mary Huerta.
You've got a knife. Watch out.
She's a graduate also of the County Supervisory Academy. She has a wonderful husband, five children, and four grandchildren with another on the Vicky Montoya is celebrating 20 years of service. We wish her well. Margaret Venegas celebrates 20 years of service. Margaret has been an OA II, an account clerk, and eligibility worker. She says that family time is very important to her. Her supervisor indicates that she is a team player, always assisting where needed. Celebrating 25 years of service, Elizabeth Morales. Elizabeth had a special assignment where she represented Tulare County as a disaster-relief social worker after the Santa Cruz earthquake to provide services to displaced elderly and disabled individuals. And the last in District Four, Angelina Stanfield, celebrating 25 years of service. She completed the 2009 class of Leadership of Northern Tulare County. She's also a member of Dinuba Kiwanis. Onto District Five. Celebrating 15 years of service, Theodore Rico de Leon. Has been a Self-Sufficiency Support Assistant since 1997. His supervisor indicates he is a great resource to staff and awesome at resolving problems. 15 years of service for Gabriela Leva. Gabriela enjoys baking with her family. She's been married for 15 years and has two daughters. Her supervisor indicates that Gabriela is very knowledgeable in the medical programs, so she has always been an excellent resource for me and her peers. Also celebrating 15 years of service, Terry Sprague. Terry started in the HHSA Children's Unit and transferred to the DA's office in Porterville. She's completed the Supervisory Academy and is becoming a grandparent is the role of her Karen Hansen, celebrating 20 years of service. Karen received her Master's in Public Administration Degree in 2004. She enjoys vacationing in Maui, Hawaii. And last but certainly not least, Judy McCullough is celebrating 25 years of service. She is the grandmother to one grandson, five-years-old, and one granddaughter, seven-years-old. She's currently a Training Officer Two in Health and Human Services Agency.
Does that conclude your presentation, Mr. Cardell?
That concludes our presentation, Mr. Chair.
I would like to have before everyone heads out real quick, I want to give each of the Board members an opportunity to say a few words if they would like about today's recipients and about our employees. Supervisor Ashida, do you like to start?
Chief Mendoza said something that was very important, and that is the cooperation between all the departments. And we've been able to accomplish it a lot because of the cooperation between the leadership in all various departments. One of them that comes to mind is the realignment of prisoners was the most recent one, and it takes the cooperation of all your departments. But more than that, with the amount of years that you have and the positions that you hold, you are the backbone of Tulare County. And we certainly appreciate your years of service and the expertise and your dedication to the county. So thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman? Yeah. Thank you for all your years of service. You know, you're the people that are out there every day. You're in the trenches. You're meeting the people. You're making this county run. And you're the most important part of this county, is the employees, because they make it up. They're like any business. There's a name on that business. Our business is Tulare County, which you are Tulare County. And we appreciate every one of you and what you do on a daily basis for Tulare County. Thank you so much.
Pastor Wardley?
Thanks, Chairman. You know, oftentimes we confuse things, and one of the things that strikes me is we talk about a church. What is a church? And many people think of a building with a steeple on it. But we know that the church is actually the people who make up the body. In much the same way, I think, in county government, we tend to look at edifices, buildings, and so forth, assets of that nature, and we think of that being the county. But really, the county is you. The people who work for our county are the backbone, as was mentioned before, but more than the backbone, they are the heart and soul of our county. And whatever we accomplish as a county together, it's because of all of you. My hope for you is that you find your work rewarding, that you find opportunities to express yourself, your opportunities to learn, to grow, to share what you have. Your knowledge is so very important that we really want to access that. I can't compare you with other counties because I only know ours, but I have to believe we got the smartest group of people that work for Tulare County. And I really do thank you for your years of service and look forward to many more years. Because, you know, let's, you know, work is important. I think it's a big part of our lives. And I, again, I hope you enjoy what you're doing. And if you haven't found a place you really like in Tulare County, look around because we have lots of opportunities to move and grow in other areas. So thank you again.
Pastor Cox?
I have to check Mr. Cardell's math, as always. I count 885 years, so maybe I dropped, you know, one or two folks off of this. But still, 900 years, that is so impressive. Each year as we do this, and I count up the number of years of service, it just amazes me at the level of dedication that you have in giving so much of yourself to the county and so much of yourself to the citizens of Tulare County. So from my heart, I deeply appreciate your commitment and what you do. And like has been said, you are the face of Tulare County. When people think of Tulare County, they think of that last person they saw wherever they were, in whatever department they were. And that's so important. And I've had so many wonderful experiences over the last eight years that I've been a part of this county family. Each time I have the opportunity to work with someone individually or work with a group of people in the county, I've always been so impressed, again, with the level of dedication, with the knowledge. And I agree with Supervisor Wardley, we do have the smartest people in the state, maybe in the nation.
All right. Well, I reiterate the comments of my colleagues and just really want to say thank you to all the county employees that make our job the best job that there is in this county because we get to work with you and we get to oftentimes take credit for the work that you do. But we know that you are the ones that are out there doing the work. And I know these last few years have not been the easiest in Tulare County and any county in the state or any governmental entity. It's been difficult, but you know what? You have persevered and you've stayed with us and really maintained that dedication and commitment. And every one of the employees that is here today has been recognized for 15 years at least of county service. That means that you're mentors to the younger generation. And I don't know how much I looked at, I'm kidding, these guys are all my mentors because they're all older than me and they have more experience than me. But the value of your mentoring of the younger employees is so critical and so valuable to Tulare County. You know, they talk about the older generation being the greatest generation and retiring and moving on, but there's so much good that you did for this county in making this county work. I hope that you're able to share that information, share that knowledge with the younger generation so that we can maintain the great direction that you've set us in. So again, thank you. Things will get better, and we appreciate your efforts. We appreciate your perseverance, and most of all, we appreciate your service. And on behalf of Tulare County, we say thank you. And I, as one supervisor, and I know my colleagues would like to join me, would like to give you a standing ovation before we end this presentation. So thank you very much. All right. And with that, what we're going to do is we're going to take a brief, three to five-minute recess. I'm surprised my colleagues what time we call this back while we let our employees get back to work and do the great deeds they do for Tulare County. Thank you, everyone. Scheduled board meeting, that would be fantastic. Mr. Rousseau is locked out, so hopefully he will, okay. Nice to see you join us, Gene. All right. The next item on our agenda is item number three, and that's public comments. This portion of the meeting is reserved for members of the public wishing to comment on any item not appearing on the agenda today. Under state law, public comment can be and will be limited to three minutes. I see a member of the public that I recognize. Ms. Sullivan, what do you have for us this morning?
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chairman, fellow Board members. Crystal Sullivan, Chief of Litigation for the County of Tulare. I have with me today Deputy Chief Julia Langley, one of the smart people with the county. She just recently prevailed at the Fifth District Court of Appeal on our medical marijuana ordinance issue, and I'd like her to take a very few minutes to riff you on the outcome.
Great, thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Your Board may remember that in 2010, we initiated litigation against a ostensible medical marijuana collective located in an agricultural zone. This was based on your zoning regulation that limits or restricts the location of medical marijuana cooperatives to certain areas based on threats to public health and safety in terms of where they're located. We prevailed in that litigation and obtained an injunction against that collective, and they appealed that to the Fifth District Court of Appeals. And as you know, the wheels of justice grind slowly, but they grind exceedingly small. And yesterday, the Fifth District Court of Appeal affirmed the trial court's ruling, and they have upheld your zoning ordinance. Yes. And they've said, again, unequivocally, that neither one of these medical marijuana statutes, the Compassionate Use Act or the Medical Marijuana Program Act, neither one of these give qualified patients or caregivers the unfettered right to cultivate or dispense marijuana wherever they choose. And so we're good. We're legal and we're upheld.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Great job. All right. Is there anyone else wishing to speak under public comment this morning? Okay, seeing no one, I will close the public comment period, and we will now move on to Board of Supervisors matters. And we're going to start with a supervisor who was not here with us last week. Supervisor Ashida, what do you have to share with us?
Well, Mr. Chairman, it's been a busy two weeks. I attended a RCRC meeting in Mariposa County. It was a board meeting, and I sit on the board representing Tulare County. The one thing that came out in that meeting that kind of struck me was that this SRA fee, this fee for fire for people who live in the Responsibility District for CAL FIRE, triggered something at unintended consequence, and that is the insurance companies are looking at all those parcels. And in your mountain communities, more so up north, some of the insurance companies are not writing new insurance. And they also are upping the insurance fees for those people who live in the foothills in the mountains under, in the CAL FIRE Responsibility area. So this, I don't believe, has hit us yet in Tulare County, but it has impacted many other counties, especially the mountain counties. So another good deed goes, never goes unpunished. Last Saturday, I attended the Orange Blossom Festival banquet, which was basically in honor, honoring the Sister City program between Ono City, Japan, and Lindsay, which is, was celebrating their 40th anniversary. So we had a lot of dignitaries from Ono City at the So, we had a lot of dignitaries from Ono City at the banquet. Last Tuesday, the reason I missed the board meeting, I attended a California Freight Advisory Committee meeting, which I represent the eight San Joaquin Valley counties. And I have a seat at that table with 50 other people. And it's a very all-inclusive group. We have environmentalists, we have the railroad companies, we have the other council of governments, we have cabinet members, we have trucking, we have everybody. We are looking to develop a statewide freight program, a goods movement program. It's one of the highest costs in business right now is the delivery of goods. And since California brings in about 60% of all the imports by ship, that it's a very important issue for the state of California. I heard a lot of words about compromise in this program. Well, to me, there's no compromise. We're there to do a freight program, and when we look at the environmental side of a freight program, that is the logical beneficiaries of a good freight program, is how do you move freight efficiently throughout the state of California? And your side benefit will be the environmental side of global warming and every other thing that they believe is important. Last Thursday, I attended a regional water quality board meeting, and recently, the state water quality board was told to stop implementing groundwater fees, monitoring fees on farmers, on irrigated farmlands because their EIR was inadequate. But our district, they're going to full speed ahead, looking at doing regulations and fees. And the fee they came up with in the meeting was 19, about $19.50 an acre per year per irrigated farmland in our district. Tulare County has 1 million acres of irrigated land. Less $19.5 million a year they want to take out of Tulare County for nitrate groundwater monitoring program. Quite frankly, if we had $19.5 million a year, probably for five years and maybe 10, we could take care of the nitrate problem in our disadvantaged communities in our cities. We'd have enough money to solve the problem instead of putting it into a monitoring program where we get a stack of paper and we do not accomplish anything. Then on Friday, I attended the San Joaquin Valley Partnership Economic Summit. It was all positive news. And Friday night, I attended the graduation of six new lieutenants for our fire department. And like I mentioned, June will be the sixth anniversary of our Tulare County Fire Department. And because of people like Chief Sunderland, Mendoza, and others that we hired to put this department together, we've had more or less a seamless transition from Cal Fire into a county fire department. And I'm very proud of the way our county fire department has been functioning. And I'm very proud of the men and the six new lieutenants we have on hand. And that's all I have. I'm sorry it went long. I've been gone for a while.
That's okay. We're used to it, supervisor. We're going to move on now to Supervisor Cox.
A few things. Last week, it was my pleasure to attend an event Wednesday evening, put on by our district attorney, where a memorial quilt was unveiled for victims of violent crime. Always a very touching time to be with families and friends of those families who suffered a loss over the last year. And also, over the last 15 or 20 years, people that have been affected by violent crime or lost someone to violent crime usually comes to support the others that are there still mourning in some way. But a very heartfelt, good event. I want to thank the district attorney for continuing that program because it's very much needed to keep the healing process going for these folks. On Thursday evening, we had the Step Up Challenge Awards program at the Fox Theater. I believe we had winners in every district. Each of the supervisors have been given a listing of the schools that participated in their district and who the winners were, what the projects were. And we'll have a presentation come back to the board here when our, I guess, when the agenda lightens up a little bit. So, in the next month, we'll have a report. Saturday, my wife and I went out to Mooney Grove, working with the Mormon Helping Hands group. There were several hundred members of our church who went out and did service projects in Exeter, Farmersville, Visalia. We happened to be able to work over at Mooney Grove, cleaning one of the old buildings out there. And it was very interesting to meet with Stephanie, very nice talking with her. And I commented how many spiders there were, and she goes, "Well, Supervisor Cox, you need to look around you. We're in the middle of a park, and this park is full of trees." She goes, "We can knock down every spider web today and come back tomorrow, and it's back again." So, the work that was done was very much appreciated because we were able to get some of the deep cleaning done that you really don't see on a day-to-day basis. Also, another group planted over 1,000 plants in a walk park over on County Center and Cameron. That's it.
Thank you, Supervisor Cox, Supervisor Wardley. Actually, you know what? Go ahead. Yeah, we'll go with you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I had my order in my mind that I was going --
Okay. Which would have put me -- three, four usually follows three, so. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of things. Last week, I was asked to come before the Dinuba City Council. They were concerned about our C and G program and the concern about jeopardizing the diversion that we're now achieving with the new RFP that's gone out, and they wanted me to have to share that with the board. Their concern about diversions, I mean, they're a member of our CWMA, and the reason for being that is so they get the benefit of working together to get the diversion rates up. And there's a concern that we may be going in the wrong direction. So, I just wanted to share that with the board. This coming Thursday and Friday, the, I'm sorry, the Air Board is going to be having a retreat up at Bass Lake, so I will be attending that event. And last Friday, Dinuba High School hosted an invitational track meet where over 30 schools, or rather, 30 schools participated from up and down the valley. And so, my wife and I worked at trying to get all those kids signed up for the different events, and it's quite an event. But it's quite amazing to see all those kids come from all over the place. And I tell you, very impressed with the quality of kids that came through, very appreciative about being there, very polite, and we had a really good experience, so that's all I have.
That's great. And you even got to meet another Vanderpool. Go ahead, Supervisor Ennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. Talk about the youth challenge through the Step Up program. I had three schools in Porterville that were involved in that, Burton Middle School, Bartlett, and Manatchee. And Burton Middle School won a $2,500 award, which it was quite a vast -- they did so many things. They recycled, they cleaned the campus, they had their own garden, they painted graffiti. I mean, this thing was so diversified, but they had the kids that they took videos and really, these kids really had a lot of enthusiasm. I was, I got to visit them over there, and it was really something to see. Manatchee High School, I was the runner-up. Mr. Lou John, who was on the Burton Middle School, I wanted to make sure I got his name out there because he did an excellent, excellent job with them. And Manatchee High School was the runner-up, and Cindy Savage was the advisor there, and theirs was on bullying, prevention and building self-esteem. And then Barton Middle School also was, got an innovation award for their bullying and bullying awareness and stuff. So, I think we're finally getting, I think the kids are starting to get on board with this bullying and seeing what can happen. Also, Thursday, we're going to have our Big Gang Summit in Porterville, Porterville High School at 4:30. Dr. Ramon Raisa will be our keynote speaker, and we'll have all kinds of breakout sessions and looking forward to that. We're hoping for a big crowd. We've had as high as 700 or 800 kids. The last one, we were at Granite Hills, we only had about 500 or 600 people show up. But we're hoping for well over 1,000 because this high school is centrally located right in the middle of town, so looking forward to that. So, that's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Supervisor. I just want to go over a few things. First of all, this Friday in Tulare, they're going to be having a grand opening for their newest park over at Mulcahy Middle School. That's going to be a community park that will serve the community of Tulare. Tulare has some wonderful parks that community members really enjoy right now, so it's great to see them open up other opportunities and diversify the locations of those parks. So, that's going to be really exciting, and that's in collaboration with the Tulare City School District as well as the Parks and Recreation Department in Tulare. So, we know that parks are very key to physical well-being and wellness, and I look forward to that opening in Tulare. Also, wanted to make a plug. I know today is April 30th, but tomorrow is May 1st, and I wanted to make a plug for Mental Health Awareness Month, which begins tomorrow. I do serve on behalf of the Board of Supervisors on the Tulare County Mental Health Board and really enjoy that opportunity. And I just want to make a plug for what they are doing and the activities that they are undertaking this month to really spread awareness and bring help to a segment of the population that's often overlooked. You know, when you think of one in five children or one in four adults suffering from a diagnosable mental health illness at some point in their life, you realize that it touches every one of us in some way, shape, or form. So, I really encourage everyone to learn about mental health issues this month and to really help spread the awareness about all of the issues and complications surrounding mental health issues in our community. So, with that, it looks like Supervisor Ashida's really not done. He would like another comment. Go ahead, Supervisor.
I forgot something.
Okay.
You know, when you're a kid, you look, I think I might have said this before, you look forward to certain things. You look forward to being 16-years-old till you get a driver's license. You look forward to being 21 so you can, well, it's now, it's 18, that you can vote and you can legally consume alcohol.
21.
At 21. And then there's a big void. What do you look for? What are the other threshold marks in your life that happen after 21? Well, I hit my one of them last week, and I joined Supervisor Ennis on Medicare. And I don't see any other --
landmarks.
Yeah, mileposts in the future. So, I just wanted to mention that I'm partnering with Supervisor Ennis now.
I think every birthday, you look forward to it.
Well, you did forget one milestone that happens after 21, which I experienced a few years ago, and that was being able to rent a car. So, that was kind of neat. That was really something to achieve. But anyways, so that being concluded now, we're going to move on to our 9:30 timed items. And before we get to those, we're going to entertain the consent calendar. There are no items that are requested by staff to be pulled from the agenda this week. Are there any items from members of the board or members of the public at this time?
Of approval, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Hang, hang. We'll pull item 23 for separate consideration. We will move, we will pull item 23. We have a motion from Supervisor Wardley to approve the balance of the consent, and a second by Supervisor Ennis. Please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, and we will now undertake item 23.
Mr. Chairman, I have a quick question of our fire folks on this. Yesterday, I'd asked and hadn't got the answer. Maybe Mr. Russo has the answer to this. My question was, are we purchasing this radio equipment for the state of California? Or is this switching just so that they can dispatch for us? Do they not have the wideband capability themselves on, at their station or in their trucks? And if they already have that, why are we buying your equipment? Pretty simple, I think.
You know, I do have the answer, but we'll let Mr. Mendoza give his final presentation.
Couldn't let you leave without putting your feet to the fire a little bit.
Sir, my only argument is I'm retiring. Do you have to really, do you have to question me? No. I can answer your question. In 2007, when we moved out of the CDF, I know I'm a CDF, that's who I worked for, and I know there are no Cal Fire now, but forgive me, CDF. We left our old radio over there so that we could communicate with them, and they also function as a backup. All of our radio tones for the stations, so what the dispatchers do is they stack up, the pagers say we're going to send Dinuba, Kings River, Orozco, and they stack them up. They hit a key and they send it, and it transmits through that radio. What happened was is that the old radio that we left with the CDF folks is old and it cannot be narrowbanded, so it's an illegal radio. Recently, the state radio technicians went in there, talking to the CDF personnel, and said, "Please, no, don't take that radio out." So, right now, all they can use it is as a receiver. They can't transmit on it. So, heaven forbid, if something were to go down at our shop, our radio were to fail or something bad happens, they can take over dispatching, even though it may be a little bit ugly, but they would be able to dispatch from the CDF facility, keep our engines going, get somebody to your home wherever. And so, that's the purpose for it. So, what we want to do is our current radio is seven years old. It's, we bought it when we took over, so we would like to take our old radio out, this brand-new one that we're requesting, putting in at Firecom as a daily driver, take our used one, and then put it over there so they can transmit with it. So, if we would, they become really a backup, and it's essential to the system as part of that cooperation. They're also able to talk dispatch center to dispatch center. Okay?
Great.
Any other questions?
That was a fantastic final presentation, Chief. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you again.
We appreciate it. A motion to approve. We have a motion by Supervisor Cox, and a second by Supervisor Ennis. Please vote. And you got a unanimous vote on your final presentation, so great job, Chief. Enjoy retirement. All right. Now, we are done with the consent calendar, and we will undertake our timed items, beginning with item number five, which is a public hearing, a request from the Treasury Tax Collector Registry of Voters to approve the proposed fee schedule to recover incurred costs. Rita?
Good morning, Chairman Vanderpool, supervisors, Mr. Russo, Ms. Roberts. We're here today to conduct a public hearing to change certain fees charged in the Tulare County Treasury Tax Collector and Registry of Voters offices, and after the hearing, ask that the board then approve these changes to the fee schedule for these offices. I don't really have a PowerPoint. I just put in the agenda item that's in your packet, and I thought it'd be appropriate to have the fees up on the screen, but it's kind of hard to see them, huh? It's a small spreadsheet. The Treasury Tax Collector and Registry of Voters perform certain functions for which fees may be charged to recover incurred costs. The board has asked us to annually review the fees that are charged. On the schedule attached to the agenda item are fees we felt warranted to changes. All calculations have been reviewed by the Auditor's Office and County Council as required by county procedures. These fees are based on time studies and current materials costs. They've also been noticed in the Visaya Times Delta newspaper as required. If approved, the changed amounts will become effective in 60 days. The approval of these fees will have little effect on the overall revenue of the office due to the low occurrence of the charges and the small amount of the increases or decreases. First item on the Treasury Tax Collector's schedule, which is a new fee allowed under Revenue Taxation Code 2922 for the cost of judgment and satisfaction of judgment letters prepared in some unsecured property tax collections. All of the items and other items in the Treasury Tax Collector's schedule are being reduced. The last three items under the tax sale section, if I can get this down here, right in here, these three here are to bring fees to a flat amount instead of actual costs to make it easier for the public and for the cashiers collecting the fees. The last item, oh, this is the, I'm sorry, this is the election one, instead of, instead of the Treasury Tax Collector one. On my list, it was first, sorry. Yes, the first one is up here, and then these three here. The last one is under seizure, is to change from a flat amount to $15-plus cost to match the change wording now in Revenue Taxation Code 2958. There can be widely varied costs when seizing unsecured property for unpaid taxes, such as if a sheriff deputy is required for the action, or if a locksmith is required, or if towing is required, or specific expertise is required, such as someone who can drive a combine or a bulldozer. It's been 40 years. It's been 40-years-or-so since I've driven one of those. So, we'd have to hire somebody. So, on the Registrar Voter's side, if I can get that one back up. There we go. All of the fee changes requested are increased slightly. If it's based on time studies and current materials costs, but also the cost of the programs used to maintain the files and prepare certain reports have increased. That's the major reason why those costs have increased there. But they're just slightly up most of them. The last item on that schedule, the fee for district maps, is to make it clear to customers that we charge the same price as the county GIS division for any maps created. There was confusion on that. We'd like to have that in our schedule just for the public. So, thank you. And I'm available to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, I, again, I appreciate the fact why we don't have a CPI built into our fee structure because as you pointed out, Rita, many of our fees are dropping. That comes about because of greater efficiencies or greater purchasing power, whatever the case may be, better employees, smarter employees. But the fact of the matter is that when we do this kind of, it's almost like zero-based budgeting where we go back and examine, we find out that sometimes what we are charging people exceeds our actual costs. And that's the whole purpose of fees is to recover our costs. So, appreciate you bringing this forward. And I'm sure one of the reasons we probably won't have a lot of people showing up here to be upset about that is because we have both a combination of some small increases and some decreases. And that speaks well for your operations.
Thank you. And we're very proud of the efficiencies we brought forward in the tax collector side especially.
Any other comments? I just have one comment that I would make. You know, I'm glad to see a lot of these fees going down. But I did have one comment, and that was, you know, you can kind of tell based on resolution numbers when they were passed. So, like I'm looking at a fee that was from 2003 where we recovered 128% of our costs. And I realize that efficiencies have been gained since that time. But just making the point to constantly be reviewing these fees and bringing decreases as soon as we possibly can because I really want to make sure that we're never charging more than the actual cost of providing that service. So, but I really am, in general, very happy with the decreases that you're bringing forward. So...
Thank you.
Thank you, Rita. Any other comments? Supervisor Sheed has...
I also like to thank you for bringing these adjustments forward. And I hope all the other departments do the same. I hate to see us get involved again with a fee that hadn't been raised in 10-years. And all of a sudden, we get this massive increase. And so, for all the other department heads and electeds, please keep us updated with the fees, with the increases and the decreases, as the chairman stated. Thank you.
Supervisor Cox?
I'll echo that. Supervisor Vanderpool's happy for the decreases. I'm happy for the increases because it reduces our net county costs. And I'll just echo what Supervisor Sheed said. We need to stay on top of this and not let these things slide for five, 10 years. If you have a fee that was 200% of what you were, you know, it was costing you, you go for 10-years. That could trigger issues where you need to go back and do some refunds. We don't want to be in that situation either. So, thank you, Rita. I know you guys run a tight shop to the penny.
All right. With that, this is a public hearing. I will now open the public hearing and ask if there's any members of the public that would like to wish, would wish to comment on this item. Seeing no comments, we will close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for action.
With approval.
There's a motion by Supervisor Sheed and a second by Supervisor Cox. Please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Rita. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is item number six, is a public hearing, a request from Health and Human Services Agency to adopt fee adjustments for Public Guardian, Environmental Health, Public Health, Health Operations, and Medical Records Divisions for fiscal year 2013-2014, beginning July 1, 2013. Tim?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Tim Lutz with Health and Human Services. I appreciate this opportunity to come before you this morning to discuss our requested fee increases for the Health and Human Services Agency. Similar to the Auditor's Office, we went through our fees this year and looked at areas where we wanted to bring fees in line, bring them down where we could, and some going up with the idea of recuperating our costs and trying to make it as fair and equitable to the members of the community at the same time. We identified five programs that needed fee changes this year, our Public Guardian, Environmental Health, our Public Health Immunizations Program, our Health Operations, which are our clinics, and also our Medical Records Division. The first item is the Public Guardian. With that, we have one fee, and that's for our Representative Payee Program. That fee is what we charge for the management of client assets that are receiving social security supplemental security benefits. And so, what we end up doing with that is managing their finances, paying their rent, clothing, things like that. The idea there is it's a safety net for those clients to make sure their bills are paid, they remain safely in whatever, if they're in a home or if they're in a facility. Those costs, we're asking for an increase of 2.6% or $1. And they will cover costs of managing those finances for those clients. The next area is our Environmental Health Program. I'll spend the most time on this just because this is where we started to look at some of the most changes. I anticipate next year bringing even more to the board. This was kind of our first round. We had to make some changes this year. And so, as long as we were going to do that, we'd try and do some restructuring. Over the last year and a half, two-years, there have been a lot of changes in the Environmental Health Program, including new leadership. And with that, there's been a greater emphasis in looking at compliance and enforcing state laws, mandates. And the key area in that program is the fees we charge for various services. The fees are a complete cost recovery for that program. Without those fees, you know, we would have county general fund costs. So, the key there is striking that balance between what recuperates cost, but also is fair and equitable to members of the community. And we've been very sensitive to that throughout the, this process over the last year. The Environmental Health Division Manager has gone out and talked to a number of chambers with those types of concerns on the community impacts. And as we progress through this, depending on your board's action today, if we were to have an approved fee, we would still engage the chamber with outreach on the changes, but also looking at that, the new structure, if there needs to be adjustments, bring that back to the board and make those adjustments. But our goal going into this was to keep fees as low as possible for as many of the vendors who are applying for permits as possible. So, what we did then is create a greater categorization of our fees with the idea that it creates a more transparent relationship when the person comes in. So, whereas you might have had one swap meat vendor fee, now you can break it down to having two or three. Same with our farmers markets and also our temporary food facility. And I'll get into those in a second. But just knowing that what we tried to do is create more tiers. So, it looks like we're adding additional fees, but in fact, what we're trying to do is create more transparency. So, someone knows what they're coming in and asking for. Our new methodology that we're doing is based on a time and risk standard with the idea that a lower-risk food vendor requires less time for us to go out, do an inspection. So, they're charged less. This is in contrast to our previous approach, which was pretty much the one-size-fits-all, try and target it to what your average or maybe more expensive vendor takes. And so, then the simpler ones end up sharing a much greater cost than the less complex ones. So, what we then looked at is the savings that would result to these lower-risk category food vendors. And I wanted to give you two examples on here with the not potentially hazardous food vendors. Under the current fee structure, they're paying $116. Under the new fee structure, they would be paying $58. So, there would be a 50% reduction in the fees that that group is paying.
Tim, can I stop you real quick and just ask you there? The not potentially hazardous food vendor, for example, an issue that's coming up with me very frequently is the Tulare Kiwanis Club does a pancake breakfast that they try to put on for various different community functions. They do it at no charge. And they've actually come forward and said they're probably going to have to stop with the pancake breakfast if they're going to be charged these fees and have the inspection costs and everything else just add up. Is there any thought of a nonprofit-type carve-out or even further reduced fee for nonprofit-type functions or not? I understand there's the hazard risk has to be balanced with the time it takes to inspect, et cetera, et cetera. But it's difficult when you have someone trying to do the good for another organization and have to be held responsible for that level of fee.
And that certainly is. And we recognize a challenge for nonprofits that, like you say, if they're not charging for the food, they have limited ability to recoup. When we look at that, the issue is our mandates, of course, never change for what we have to inspect. And there's still always going to be the cost associated with bringing the person out, doing that inspection. And if we exempted, for instance, those groups, we'd run into a situation where we wouldn't have enough revenue coming in to cover those costs.
Mr. Chairman, if I may jump in?
Sure.
Julia Roberts, Chief Deputy County Counsel. Your Tulare County Ordinance Code, Sections 160 and 165 allows the board to refund or reduce or even waive fees on case-by-case basis. So, if this is something that your board, if one of these programs is something your board feels strongly about, you maybe could use your good works money and/or reduce the fees for them on a case-by-case basis.
Okay, great. Thank you. Appreciate that. Sorry to interrupt you, Tim.
Oh, that's okay. Did you have any other questions?
That was sufficient. Thank you.
Okay. The next example is on our potentially hazardous food vendors. Under the current structure, for a temporary facility, they would be paying $326. Under the old structure, under the new one, they would be paying $174, which would be a 47% reduction.
Chair?
Sure.
What is a potentially hazardous?
I know.
Stay away.
I got quite an education in environmental health from Vivian, our Environmental Health Manager. Really, what we look at on the scales is, you know, your least hazardous is something like an apple. There's very few risks if you're, you know, giving an apple. You start to get into gray area if you have like melons, or if you have cheese, eggs, any raw meats that then comes to a tier where it's now potentially hazardous food. You add more complexity sometimes if you're then value-adding by preparing that food in some way. So, the idea is take the tier of if somebody's just literally given you an apple, that's the least hazardous. If they're cutting up that apple, serving it, that adds a little more risk because now you're having somebody have to actually cut it, prepare it, and you worry about hygiene, where it's cut, things like that.
I was told that that became a prepackaged item once you cut it up and put it in a bag and didn't have to have the inspection.
The prepackaged, and part of that might also be where it's prepared? If, well...
You know, I apologize for asking.
Oh, no, that's all right. It's a good question.
We've been having, you know, since we've got new people in place, we've got, you know, I think being a little more vigilant, which we should because our concern is the public safety, public health. We just, our phone is kind of ringing off the hook from folks that we're used to doing the pancake breakfast as a fundraiser or something of that nature. And now they're finding out they're going to have to do something they've not had to do for the last 30-years.
Good morning, Board. Vivian Nelson, Environmental Health, HHSA. Ms. Roberts, Mr. Russo, Mr. Chair. The question was prepackaged. And prepackaged would mean packaged pre, which would indicate that it was packaged at the place of manufacture. Putting it into a baggie would not be considered prepackaged with some exceptions. And as you get into the food code, the more questions you ask, the more questions are generated. So, I can get deeper and deeper and give you all of the exemptions. But just suffice it to say that generally, a baggie would not be considered prepackaged.
Thanks.
Was there another question?
I'm going to take, if you're cooking anything, you're hazardous food, potentially.
Potentially, yes. So, looking at the fee requests, what we're looking at or requesting from the board is to delete the two broad categories, which is the produce, prepackaged food at the 116, and then the temporary food event, annual, single vendor. And really then create clarity on what exactly those are because reading them, they're not entirely clear. And so, what we did then is take three different sets. This first one is the temporary food facility vendor. And there you can see the first tier is the not potentially hazardous food at the $58. Then, if you have the value added with the food sampling, some kind of preparation, it goes to 116. And then, the potentially hazardous foods goes up to $174. The next group, which is what we are adding this year, is the certified farmer's market vendors. And those, we broke out with four tiers with the same relationship or structure as the previous, which is the not potentially hazardous food, the food sampling, value added. And then, because this is where we start to get also more of the potentially hazardous foods, we have the 174. And then, really just for clarity and breakout purposes for our tracking, you can see there are, there's a separate potentially hazardous food, food sampling, that's the same fee. But again, separate because there's something that's being done to that food beyond just preparing it to leave. And then, the last is the swap meat vendors, two tiers there because there isn't, for any of the swap meat vendors, there isn't potentially hazardous food. It's just, you know, handing it out or dispensing samples of it. And so, that's the $58 or $116.
Tim, are all those fees annual fees?
Yes.
Okay. So, one vendor, annual basis.
Yes. Now, there, there one caveat that I will say going to the temporary food facility vendor is that is per location. And so, whereas the old fee structure, a lot of people, if they go to one or two locations, they're paying $326. But they were able to go all around the county. When we looked at statutes, that wasn't allowed. We needed to then make that modification. And that's part of that impetus by bringing these fees down in this category especially, is that they could be paying the $116 twice because they're at different facilities. The idea is they pick up, their kitchen changes at each of those locations. So, it has to be re-inspected. It's not as simple as a mobile food vendor where they have their own kitchen in their vehicle. It travels around with them. And you know it's more or less consistent wherever they're at.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that raises a question, I guess, Tim. Because as I think about those examples of people who go from place to place, some of them are in, you know, their systems are ones that don't change. So, in other words, they have a mobile unit of some kind. So, they're using the same, you seem hauling them down the freeways, right? They go to the parish carnivals and so forth. In that situation, they're going to different facilities, but they're using their same plumbing, if you will.
If they have a truck, yeah, if they have a truck, then that would be a mobile food facility.
So, therefore, they pay, they don't have, they're not being, even though they're going to a temporary place, it's not going to be, they're not going to be hit with a fee every time they go to a different carnival site or something like that.
This is more encompassing, somebody that maybe comes out and barbecues at Mooney Grove. They're, you know, using the barbecue pit there. Or then, they're going to the Ag Expo and then doing something different. They don't have an actual kitchen that comes with them, so to speak. The other area that we did change is our swap meat, or I'm sorry, our organizer fees. And with that, we had the one organizer fee at 341. We would request to delete that and add the certified farmer's market organizer fee, temporary food facility organizer fee, and swap meat organizer fee. Again, just for clarity purposes so they know exactly what they're applying for. This is the only real increase that we're requesting, which is $7 and 2%. That reflects, in the, in the prior years, that hadn't been updated for two-years when we changed our base billing rate. we changed our base billing rate, that $116. This was just catching that up with the base billing rate. And then we would also have an organizer plan resubmittal fee of $58, and that's if there are, they submit the plan, it's done, but then they come back and wanna make changes to it and resubmit that fee. And then the workers have to go back out, re-inspect it, make sure that it still meets If there are any other questions on the environmental health vendor fees, I can go to the next. The next one is the public health immunization fees. And there, we're requesting eight increases with the average amount of the increase at $9.63. We're requesting four decreases, average amount of the decrease is $11.50. And we are providing one new vaccine. These fees are typically billed out to the healthcare plans if people come to the, you know, immunization clinics and their health plan offers that coverage. It could also be billed as a direct cost to the client if there isn't insurance in place or billed to like the Tulare County Medical Services Program. I should add, on top of these fees, there included in here is a $9 administrative fee that was approved last year at the board, and that is not changing this year. So all of these increases reflect the direct change in the price of the vaccine themselves. And so that's where you see the variability, why some go up, some go down, it really just based on the costs of our medications. And if there are any other questions on the immunizations piece, I can go to the next Our health clinic fees, we're requesting three adjustments of the fees there. The way that our federally qualified health centers work is that our rates are based off of the Medi-Cal procedure codes, or, I'm sorry, medical procedure codes. And the industry standard is to first try and base that rate off of 150% of Medicare. If that's not available, we base it off of the Medi-Cal rate, and that's what is required for the FQHC itself. When we looked at the three that needed to be adjusted, they don't have Medicare procedure codes, so we use the Medi-Cal rate. So costs of this are based on the Medi-Cal rate. And these are the three fees. All three are increases, again, with the cost of the medical procedure. That includes whatever the medication or apparatus is, and then the doctor time, the staff overhead, things like that. And this is then billed to insurance companies or Medi-Cal or to patients on a sliding fee scale. And that sliding fee scale is based on income and ability to pay. The last fee we have is our medical record retrieve, retrieval fees. This year, similar to environmental health, we came in and evaluated that structure and the practice of how we charge for retrieving and duplicating fees. We left most of those fees unchanged. What we are requesting is a reduction in one of those and also to add another one to, I think, more accurately recuperate costs, and I'll get into that on the next slide. We're also looking at adding a fee for costs of medical record reports. What this is, is when claims administrators or attorneys ask our physicians to do a more comprehensive medical report on a client, it then, the doctor needs to go in, pull the chart, go through the information, compile this report and send it up. The average time for completing that's about 30 minutes. And because it is either a doctor or a nurse practitioner, it's usually a, you know, it's pulling a more expensive position out of doing their time to see clients. And so we wanted to try and establish a fee to recuperate some of those costs. So what we can see on the medical records, retrieval, processing and copying, we'd like to add a retrieval and processing fee, which is $4 per quarter hour. In general, the time it takes to, for that retrieval is between two minutes to 30 minutes, typically, probably about 15 minutes. So what we did also to try and keep costs at a minimum, if there's something complex, is cap that at two hours. So the max would be $16 at that point. Then, the, I'm sorry, 28, 32, says the math person. And then also the requests for microfilm pages, the, when we looked at the newest regulations, the max cost was $20 per page. We very infrequently have those, but we did keep the fee on the book in case we do have to go back to some old microfilm, because there are still some sitting around in existence for us. We just rarely have to go back to it. And then the last piece is the medical evaluation form and report. On that, we're requesting 4944. That's, the odd number is because it was based strictly on the cost, the time study cost of performing that function with the office staff, medical assistant, and then the physician or nurse practitioner to actually complete the report and submit it. And that concludes the fee presentation. I would be happy to answer questions.
Any questions from board members, supervisor Worthy?
Just simply as that last one, I think we should either round it up or round it down and make it an even number, because 44 cents, this just creates havoc in terms of trying to keep track of everything, so. Other than that, I have no other comments.
Okay, any other comments or questions from the board members? All right, we, this is a...
Mr. Chairman, I did wanna correct myself. I quoted Ordinance Code Sections 160 and 165 as being your fee waivers or refunds, and it's actually 130 and 135. I don't know where my mind is.
You know, I knew that off the top of my head. I knew that, so I'm glad you corrected it.
I was gonna send you a point note later.
Okay, with that, this is a public hearing, and I will open the public hearing at this time. Is there any member of the public that would wish to comment? Please state your name and address for the record, you can use either microphone.
Good morning.
And they are adjustable, so you can adjust it.
Good morning, my name is Alan Landon. I'm a retired teacher from the county here, my wife's also a retired teacher, she knows Pete.
Oh.
Kathy Landon at Clary.
Yeah, yeah.
And we, since we've retired, we've formed a small business, and we have a wood-fired brick oven on a trailer, which we take to farmer's markets, and we cook amazing pizzas, apparently, because get a lot of nice compliments. Now, I've been doing this for two years, this, we're beginning our third season this now. And last December, we were, in the past, I was able to pay the $326 one time, and it covered all my activities during an entire year. One, one charge of $326, and that covered, we did the Thursday evening to Visalia Farmer's Market weekly during the summer. We also added the Tuesday evening Farmer's Market in Tulare last summer for the first time. And we were also able to attend weekend activities. We went to the Porterville Fire Department Chili Cookoff, we've done things in Exeter and so on, Fourth of July Harvest Festivals and things. And that one $326 covered my entire year. About December, I think it was, we received a letter from the TCEH saying that the county council had reviewed the CRFC, California Retail Food Code, and said that there's a word in there, the location, which is what Mr. Worthy brought up. The word location has been interpreted differently than it has been in the, in the past. And that now, to participate in what I've been doing, I must pay a $326 fee for Visalia Market, I must pay a $326 fee for Tulare Market, and I must pay $53, I think it is, for each weekend event we want to participate in. Now, this is not a 2% increase or 50% decrease in our fees, it's a huge, you know, couple hundred percent increase in the fees we're required to pay. Now, I'm not the only one that's affected by this. Tulare, the Visalia Farmer's Market has about 10 vendors who do what I do. And they also participate in other farmer's markets, weekly events. And if you look at fee generation there, 10 of us in Visalia, $326 apiece, that's $3,260 those 10 people are generating for the Visalia Market. Add Tulare to it, there are about 10 more there too, another $3,260 we're generating. If we go to Lindsay Market, which I'm not sure how many, we don't participate in that one, it's a weekly event, it's year-round, it, 10 of those, there's $3,260. I don't know how many folks participate in the Lindsay Market. But each of these locations is now requiring huge fee increases. Now, the, and this is what they sent us in December. Now, I was visibly concerned about the, the fee increases we were facing, just me, my wife, for our little business. And I did some research online, and I brought it to the attention of the supervisors through Ms. Martinez. And in it, I had researched nine different counties, and I only looked at counties where I knew, personally knew, that someone was doing exactly the same thing I'm doing, wood-fired brick oven going to farmer's markets. And I, that was Sonoma County, Sacramento County, Alameda County, San Luis Obispo County, Kern County, Fresno County, I'm not sure about Kern County, if anybody's known it there, Fresno County, Long Beach City, and Orange County. And I, I gave that to Ms. Martinez, and I've seen it, I don't know if you ever have seen it, but the, the fees charged in those counties for exactly what I'm doing, because it's a California Retail Food Code, it's, the, the state makes the regs, and this allowed, the counties are all allowed to interpret the way they, they want to implement them. And they'll disagree with that word, but the fee structures are very different. But right, the proposed fee before the $174, proposed fee put Tulare County clear at the top of all nine of those jurisdictions in terms of the amount it's gonna cost a person doing what I do. They were clear at the top, $326 for the first, for Tulare County, $326 for the first one, another $326, and another $326, and so on. And if I was going to five or six farmer's markets, which I can't miss counting, but if I was going to five or six of those types of events, it would be a 500% increase in my fees. And we're small, we employ a couple, we've started with high school students, students we worked with in schools, college students have worked for us, we have, other folks have worked for us now. But we're employing a few people on a, on pretty much a regular basis during the summers, and it's really quite a backbreaker for us. The real key there, with the county council apparently was cited by Ms. Nelson, that in reinterpreting the CRFC was the, the wording of the, it says, "A permit shall be valid only for a person, comma, location, comma, type of food sales or distribution activity." So she interprets that as a permit's required for every location we go. And you were, you were asking about that, saying, well, what if they're the same everywhere they go? We are the same. I, we are, we have purchased the right equipment to meet the food code, and the inspectors who come inspect us, they, they say you've got everything you need. We do it right. And it doesn't matter where we go. We're exactly the same food operation, no matter what location we're at.
And Mr. Landon, I've given you a little bit of extra time, but I will tell you, your pizza is quite good and I didn't get sick, so you've got that to your credibility as well. So I, I do see Ms. Nelson has stepped forward, if she would like to comment, or if Tim would like to comment in response to that. Or would you like me to finish the public comment period and then?
Well, I mean, initially, I would, one question, if I could ask clarification point too.
Please do.
On the analysis, it was based on the $326, putting us at the top. If we looked at the 174, part of, we identified the issue on the increased cost to vendors, and that was one of the reasons why we restructured it and brought the costs down. My question would be, would the 174 make a difference in terms of what your, what your cost structure looks like then at that point?
And, yes, it would. It makes a huge difference. And it's kind of odd, too. When we went from, I was paying $326, covered the entire year, and we would get, like, and I asked them, you know, how often do I get inspected with my $326? And at the, at the farmer's markets, we got inspected one time during the summer. One time in Tulare, one time in Visalia, one inspection. And I said, okay, wow. And so the letter comes and said, it's gonna be $326 here and $326 there, so I'm paying twice as much as I used to pay. Plus, I'd have to pay more for the weekend things. But what am I getting from my $326? Oh, we're gonna inspect you twice during the summer. Okay, twice in Visalia, twice in Tulare. Okay, so, and so I brought the information to the, to Ms. Martinez, and it, I hope made it to you, apparently something happened. And now they lowered the structure, lowered it down to 174, so I'm gonna pay 174, 174, plus all the weekend things, which is bearable. But I said, what's gonna happen with the 174? And they said, well, now we're gonna inspect you three times at each of the settings. So arbitrary and capricious are the kind of words that came to mind. You were gonna go to $326 all over the place and inspect me two times, and now you chop it clear down to 174 and you're gonna inspect me three times.
Mr. Worthy, other questions?
Well, my question, I, I tried to ask it last time, I don't think I was very clear about it, but it seems like he would qualify as a mobile food vendor.
I, no, that...
Okay, well, then I, I have a problem with what we're doing too, and I understand, I think we need to evaluate what's happening elsewhere, because in my mind, if somebody is a mobile food vendor, because they're doing the same thing wherever they go and they're inspected and they're, and they, and maybe there's some criteria, I don't understand what qualifies as a mobile food vendor, maybe we look, need to expanding that somehow, because I, it doesn't make sense to me if somebody, the argument you gave was, the reason for doing this is if somebody shows up at a new, a new place, and now they pull out their barbecue, and now they pull all, all this stuff out, if a person's got a self-contained unit and they go from place to place to place, and every time is the change, is the same, what is the difference between that and a mobile food vendor, in which case, like, one fee for the year takes care of it? I'm trying to understand the distinction between those two.
That, that's the CRFC. It's, it has specific category for a mobile food facility is self-contained, completely self-contained, all operations take...
And you don't have that.
No, my trailer's sitting up, I have a canopy, which I'm required to have, I have my sink inside, my canopy, my refrigeration unit, all my cutting surfaces and everything are inside. And it does not matter where I am, I have exactly all of that equipment. It's all set up the same.
Okay, great. So, so what is your response to that, to that question, that inquiry?
Do you have any?
A temporary food facility is one which would be considered a booth. So it would have a temporary wall, a temporary ceiling, all of the necessary requirements to prepare safe food are within that booth. The heat-fired barbecue would be exterior to the booth. And the food would be prepared on that, it would be cooked, and then it would be brought into the booth to prepare it for service, for dispensing. A mobile food facility is self-contained. An example would be a catering truck or a produce truck. A kitchen inside of a catering truck is, is fully enclosed. If it is on the right-hand side, it's the same as if it was on the left-hand side, nothing will change. However, if you are in a booth, or if you have a piece of equipment that is sitting outside, that is subject to all of the location-specific criteria, such as wind, birds, rodents, dust, air, rain, leaves, people walking by. So the criteria there are different and need to be inspected for each of the different locations, and that's why an inspection is required. A permit is required for a food facility sell or give away food. And it is specific to the person, to the type of food that they sell, and also to the location that they are selling at for those criteria that I just mentioned, because it requires the inspector to go in and evaluate the site. So if you're doing something in a temporary food facility at a rodeo, the conditions there are substantially different from doing it on a paved schoolyard. And so although the equipment is set up pretty much the same, it's also taken down and stored in a garage or stored somewhere else, then brought out and erected again, but... in a garage, or stored somewhere else, then brought out and erected again, but in a different location, that have different potential impacts on that safety of food.
Okay, Jean, do you have a comment?
Yeah, are you finished? I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
Well, you know, it's clear that we probably should, should do some more research into this, and look at what other counties are doing, specific to this, to this gentleman's case, and quite frankly, the entire environmental health section. Why don't we just, if, if the board's okay with the other areas of fees, go forward and approve those, and we'll, and then HHS A will bring back in the next week or two the environmental fees issued back, after they've done some research with other counties, and we'll go from there.
You know, and I, I would be very, very much fine with that, and I know I will have to look across to see what other board members' reactions is, but I will just make the statement that I don't, you know, whether it's talking about environmental health, or resource management agency, or fire department, anything, I do not want Tulare County to be at the top of the fee structure for any peer group counties, any valley counties, or any California counties. I do not want to be at the top of the fee structure. I just want to make that point, knowing that's one supervisor. Thank you for your research, Mr. Landon, and if, I have to ask, look to the board for a direction in the form of a motion, and we can see how we'll address that, but the public hearing is still open. But I appreciate your comments, we will look into it, and thank you for your research, and we'll move on, and we'll probably be seeing you again, I assume.
If you have any questions, I'd be glad to.
Thank you very much, Mr. Landon, appreciate it. Please say hi to Kathy for me. Is, are there any other public comments at this time? Okay, seeing.
Mr. Chair, if you're going to continue part of this, you do not want to close the public hearing for that part, you're continuing.
I will close the public hearing for today's matter, and, or, close the public comment period for today, but keep the public hearing open until the item does return to us at a date certain in the future, which will be included in the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move approval of the staff recommendations, except as to the environmental health food vendor organizer fees, in which case, I want to give our staff additional, sufficient time, so I'm not sure the CAO said a week or two, it might take more than that, I'm not sure what they think they need to do that.
We can put an agenda item on again for three weeks out, I think would probably be.
Perfect, then that would be my motion, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we have a motion by Supervisor Worthley, a second by Supervisor Cox, please vote. Motion passes unanimously, thank you very much. Appreciate your, your patience, and for your first presentation, Tim, on this, in your new capacity, I hope that wasn't too painful. We'll now be moving on to public hearing number three, which is item number seven on our agenda, a request from the Resource Management Agency to approve the 2013-2014 summary of proposed fees for planning and development in accordance with Health and Safety Code Section 17951, and Government Code Sections 54986, 565909.5, 66014, 66016, and 66451.2, beginning July 1, 2013. And I just wanted to say that, because I want to make sure Julia can correct me if I'm wrong.
Yes.
Good morning, Board members. Roger Hunt, Assistant RMA Director, and hopefully the staff report is adequate in providing the explanation for the fee adjustments, and I am available for any questions.
Sure. I, I have grave concern here on the building permit fee, as I'm looking at the staff report, it's doubling the fee, and the justification that I read is because the $3.6 million spent on the general plan update. And there are so much, the general plan has absolutely nothing to do with building plans and building fees, that I, I would see this then more as a tax than a fee, because the fee's supposed to be, as I understand it, specific to the purpose for which the person comes in and requests a particular service from the county in order to proceed with their project, and so then we do our calculations based upon how much it's a time and energy it takes for us to process that fee, and we come up with a, with a fee. Here, it looks like we're using some gargantuan, some spent on a very broad matter, which is the general plan amendment, as a justification for doubling the permit fee, and I, I won't support that, if that's, if that's the justification for it.
The building permit fee is only applicable to the new construction, and so out of the, as an example, around three thousand building permits issued last year, only about four hundred and thirteen, I believe, were actually contained this general plan maintenance fee. And currently, it's a hundred and twenty-five dollars. The fee was established in 1989, was recently updated in 2009, and looking at the cost of the recently adopted general plan update, saw what the cost was and how it compared, knowing that the plan has to be renewed every twenty years, looking at what would be the cost recovery over that twenty-year period. And I used seven hundred permits with the idea that with the recession, once we get out of the recession and construction starts back up again, that we'd be anticipating numbers closer to the seven hundred, as opposed to what was last year.
I'm still struggling with the very premise of it, because I, I don't see, so much of the general plan has absolutely nothing to do with building permits. So if we've adopted, or if we have an existing rule, and an existing fee that's based upon upgrade, updating the general plan, and that's been in existence for some time, how do we end up today with a, with a doubling of the fee? Because I would think that would have been built into the fees we've been charging for
Jake Raper, Director of Resource Management Agency, it's, first of all, it's not uncommon to recapture the cost of the general plan update or maintenance from building permits, that's done universally throughout the cities and counties of California. When the county adopted the fee back when, it was based upon a cost estimate for preparation of the general plan. And in order to issue building permits, you have to have an adequate general plan, or, or adopted general plan, and that is the mechanism in which to get your cost recovery, is through your general plans, making findings of consistency for maps, and so on. So instead of charging it for maps, and parcel maps, and so on, what we do is put it under, under the building permit provision, and therefore, based upon previous actions for the county approving subdivision maps, which requires a finding of consistency with the general plan, we put it to the building permit provision or association. And therefore, because the general plan, plan is funded through the general fund, it's a recapturing of the money expended on the general fund for building permit activity. And so that's the reasoning, and that's the approach that we have taken here in Tulare County, as well as other communities in California.
Well, let me just make this observation. If I'm in a city, and I have a general plan, a general plan is, is all within the boundaries of that city.
That's correct.
And most of what happens there are building projects, whether it's building a new home, building commercial buildings, that sort of thing. In a county the size of our county, where most of the construction still takes place in the city, and not in the county, we're putting all the cost burden on, on the people who are outside of the cities to recover the cost of the general plan. I look at some of our, our costs of the general plan were caused by the cities, not by, not by construction out in the county. I mean, the one appeal we have was by a city, wasn't by the, you know, it wasn't, it wasn't the homeowner. I, I can't support this approach, because it might make sense in the city, but I don't see how it makes a bit of sense in the county. So much of what we do in the general plan has to do with environmental issues, it just goes on and on. We're being sued by an environmental organization. Is it about the building of a person's home out in the countryside? Probably not, it's probably more related to some fish someplace. So I just have a real trouble finding a nexus between a building permit and a general plan update, which costs millions of dollars. I, I just can't support that. I just don't think it makes, I don't think it fits in this, in this situation. If we were in an urbanized county, it might be, but we live in a rural county, and we just don't have that kind of construction in our county that could, I mean, if we tried to recover all of our costs for the general plan out of construction, we'd be recovering for the next two centuries, trying to recover this last time. And I, I just don't see the connection, I'm sorry.
Supervisor Sheeda?
I do see a slight connection in the MOU process we went through with the cities. And because that we have to, we're adopting their, their building codes in our UBDs, or UABs, I can see the nexus there, but other than that, I don't see a nexus, because that's an expense we have to go through every twenty years. So I agree with Supervisor Worthley, but I also think there's a way to recover permitting fees for those people who are in the MOU areas that we, we've agreed to.
I support that. Jean has a comment.
Jean, Jean Russo, County Administrative Officer. You know, I did struggle initially with this fee, but then in talking into Mr. Hunt, and the number of permits that we're going to apply it to, and the amount that it's going to generate, you know, I, I do want to remind this, the body, this board, that there's, there are a number of work programs associated with the implementation of the general plan that are, that are going to require general fund dollars. The MOU that Supervisor Sheeda alludes to, when we work to adopt the cities, city standards around their, their spheres, they are, they're going to be required to help pay for our time to do that. And we're not going to start doing that till they pay us to do that. But, but on this, on the same, in the same vein, the work plans in the plan are going to require a lot of time, a lot of general fund dollars, and this is just a way to, to generate funds to help do that. So, you know, the nexus is, is a, is a difficult one, but it's work that we're going to have to do one way or the other. It is applied to new permits, new growth, that will, that will fall under the new general plan, and that's just, that's all I want to say.
Well, I, Mr. Chairman, I, I feel like we've expended these general fund monies now. What we're trying to talk about, I mean, as I read this, it's very abbreviated, there's not an analysis that breaks it down, it just says, "We spent three and a half million dollars, we're trying to recover this money." That doesn't talk about going forward, it's on the implementation side, it just sounds like a justification, and I, frankly, I don't think any of us thought of that. I wasn't thinking that way, we knew the general plan was going to cost a lot of money. We have to have, to have a general plan for anything in this county, not just for the building industry. And so I, I, I won't, I will support an analysis that talks about what it costs us to analyze and do the, what we normally do in any kind of, kind of permit, but I cannot support this unless we're going to allocate a small portion towards that, with the just, with the understanding, we're never going to recover all this money. It's impossible, there's not enough construction going on in the county to ever generate this kind of funds. So we're, we're engaging in it in something which is not going to happen, it's not, we're not going to recover three and a half million dollars from building permits in Tulare County in my lifetime, or even Pete's lifetime. So I, I just don't think we should be going down that road, and I, and I feel like this is a general plan obligation that benefits all the people of Tulare County, in the cities, outside of the cities, and we're saddling up only the people who are trying to construct outside in the, in the, outside of the incorporated areas with this obligation, this expense. I don't think it's appropriate.
Unfortunately, or fortunately, the county is required to have a general plan, the cities have their general plans as well. And so, again, the logic is, if you have to make findings of consistency in the general plan, which basically parcel maps, subdivision maps, and so on, and therefore, if, if the board wishes to recover the cost of the general plan cost, not necessarily recover the cost, but look to the future in terms of updating the general plan again in the future, in twenty years, then you have a revenue stream that can, that can accomplish that goal. As I recall, there's been recent legislations that prohibit the cities and counties from doing a, what they call a maintenance fee for anything. Basically, you cannot collect monies for a future event, but what you can do is collect money for, monies expended to accomplish that task, and this is the, the logic and the approach that we're taking. Should the board and the CAO not wish to cover the general, general fund cost of preparing the general plan, then it becomes, as Mr. Russo indicates, a general fund obligation, and it becomes quite expensive, as the board knows, in order to maintain the general plan, provide the appropriate reporting, as well as preparing future amendments to the general, general plan. So we need a revenue stream in which to accomplish that, so.
How about the RMA general budget? I'm just kidding.
And, and we're dependent upon.
Sorry, Roger, that was a real quick look right there, I was just kidding.
We're very dependent upon the general fund on the planning branch side, so.
Any other comments from board members?
I just got one question.
Yes, sir.
How does this stack up against what other counties are charging for building permits?
I, I, we haven't compared what the other counties do, however, basically, every county is unique in terms of its circumstance. Our unique circumstance is that we just finished the general plan, we've caught a cost estimate of what the general plan update costs, and so that's the rationale that we utilized. And we could do some explorer, exploration and surveys, and report back to the board how they're recovering their costs on the general plan updates.
And let me just make one comment, too. I mean, the, the general plan update started when I was in high school, and it was of no fault of your own, nor, I believe, any of the staff that's in place currently, but there were several mistakes that were made along the way, and that did escalate the cost of the plan, and I don't think that that's really fair to be trying to recuperate those costs from this segment of the population that's going to be building things, but I'll look.
Jean Russo, CEO, once, once again, we can do what we just did with, with Health and Human Services, if this is the only fee that you have an issue with, we can hold off approving this, we can, until we bring back information from jurisdictions around us, what other counties, and quite frankly, cities are doing relative to these fees. It's by understanding that the cities are charging a general plan fee, or their permits include a portion of the general plan maintenance. So we can, we'll, we'll do some research, bring this particular fee back, keep the hearing open, so on, and if that's the, the desire of the board.
I, I appreciate that, and I personally would be more supportive of a maintenance fee that is based upon a sum that's not going to double the fee, that kind of a thing, you know, so if there's a smaller portion that goes towards maintenance, I understand maintenance does cost money, so we, I, the way I'm kind of looking at it is, we bit the bullet from general fund, we paid for the general plan, it's a done deal, almost, and that's been done, I don't want to saddle future builders with that obligation, but the ongoing maintenance of that plan is, is another matter, I could see where we would, I could be more supportive of something like that. But I, I really don't like this concept of just saying, "Hey, we spent three and a half million dollars, we need to recover it."
Okay, well, this is a public hearing, and I will go ahead and open the public hearing, because we haven't even started it yet, but we'll go ahead and open the public hearing now. Is there any member of the public that wishes to comment on the RMA portion of these fee increases this morning? Okay, seeing no one, I will bring it back to the board for action, but we will be keeping this public hearing open, I assume.
I would like to also ask the board to make the, if you approve the rates, to make it contingent upon the auditor's approval of the methodology. I had provided the information to them too late for them to have given me a decision on that.
Okay. But what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move approval of the proposed fees, with the exception of the building permit fees, which we can bring back, it's three weeks adequate time for that.
It'll be June 4th, the 28th, our meeting is canceled.
Please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Roger, appreciate that. All right, we are now going to move on to the next public hearing on our agenda, which does not include a fee increase, and that is a public hearing from the Resource Management Agency to approve the categorical exemption pursuant to 14 Cal Code Regs, Section 15305, Class 5, pertaining to, go ahead, Mike, that's a long paragraph.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Russo, Council. The matter before you is a proposed tentative subdivision map, number 826, to divide 183 acres into four lots in the AE20 zone. I will expedite my presentation today. Just please note that the Planning Commission approved this tentative map on March 13th, 2013, without any opposition whatsoever. Locationally, the proposed project is on the west side of Road 28, approximately one-half miles south of Avenue 232, Kansas Avenue, west of Tulare. With regard to SEQA, the matter was approved based upon two exemptions, the minor land division, as well as the general rule exemption. There were no adverse comments, the matter was thoroughly analyzed, as indicated in your packet, and so the California Environmental Quality Act has been satisfied. With regard to the general plan, the subject property is designated Valley Agriculture, and based upon the analysis, there will be no adverse impact to economic viability of agriculture, and thus the general plan consistency requirement is met. With regard to zoning consistency, the subject property is located in the AE40 zone, exclusive ag, forty-acre minimum, three of the four lots meet that requirement, the remaining lot qualifies under the homestead, or the homeside exemption. With regard to Subdivision Map Act compliance, the act is complied with in light of the successive subdivisions that have occurred previously. Finally, concerning the Williamson Act, the subject property is consistent with the act in that the property will continue to be used for agriculture, the parcel size is appropriate, and the length of ownership is greater than ten years. Therefore, the requested action is, number one, hold the public hearing, which was duly noticed. Secondly, to approve the SEQA categorical exemptions. noticed; secondly, to approve the SEQA categorical exemptions; three, to conditionally approve tentative map number 826; and finally, to authorize the environmental assessment officer to file the appropriate notice of exemption with the Tulare County clerk. Thank you. That completes my presentation.
Any questions or comments from board members? Okay, at this time, I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak to this item? Seeing no one, I will bring it back, I will close the public hearing, bring it back to the board for comment and action.
Move for approval.
Okay, we have a motion from Supervisor Ennis, a second from Supervisor Ashida. Please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. That was a lot easier than the maintenance fees, right? Okay. We're going to move on now to item number nine, which is a public hearing, a request from the Resource Management Agency relating to the California First program. Mr. Washam.
I'll expedite my presentation as well as going on. Mike Washam, Economic Development Manager for Tulare County. Today, we're here for consideration of joining California First PACE program.
Pull the microphone around in front of you, Mike.
Sorry. The PACE program is an alternative to a loan for financing energy efficiency equipment and upgrades. The amount borrowed is repaid through a special assessment rather than a normal loan, and it's paid on the property owner's tax roll each year. PACE allows an additional way of financing these types of improvements, and it can ultimately reduce operating costs for business. PACE is completely voluntary. Only properties that are within a jurisdiction that has chosen to opt into a PACE program may receive this type of financing. Your board on January 29th directed the Resource Management Agency to prepare the required documents to allow County of Tulare to join the PACE program offered through California First and return to your board with an opt-in resolution for its consideration. That's why we're here today. I'll briefly go through these. We've talked about these in the past, the benefits of PACE for the commercial property owners. Essentially, there's no upfront costs, and the payback can be over 20 years paid on their tax roll. What this does is it's off the book, it's no additional debt load, and it's treated like any other property tax or assessment. The benefits to actually the mortgage lenders, it's a mechanism that's well-understood, and it actually increases the value of the collateral, so they're, they look gladly upon these projects, and it helps need, they're allowed to make capital improvements on the properties without additional debt. So, the mortgage holders view this as a positive financing. And what are the benefits for the county itself? Helps promote job creation and economic development. It removes the historic barriers, the high cost to energy efficiency and renewable energy installations, and it helps achieve our greenhouse gas reduction goals for the county. And just a reminder, it's not a government subsidy and no Tulare County general fund exposure. There's two major concerns surrounding the PACE program. First was on residential properties. This program will be available only to commercial property, including multifamily, five units and more, will not accept application from residential property owners until such time as the issues raised by Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac are resolved to the satisfaction of county council. And secondly, since these assessments have priority over pre-existing mortgages, each property owner must obtain written acknowledgement from all mortgage holders on the property prior to approval of this type of financing. Just a few points to consider. No liability or exposure to the general fund, as I mentioned. The county can withdraw from the program at any time by passing a resolution rescinding the authorization. The county is free to develop and operate other financing programs, including alternate PACE programs. And pursuant to the direction from the board back on January 29th, the Economic Development Office will be bringing an alternative PACE program forward for consideration in the month of June. We have a representative from Structured Finance who will be that other organization that will be bringing forward another plan. For California First, we've received a number of support letters from Chambers, the City of Tulare, City of Icelia, the EDC, letters of support encouraging the county to opt into the California First program. With that, we request that the Board of Supervisors conduct a public hearing, find that the adoption of a resolution to enter into California First program is not a project under the California Environmental Quality Act, and adopt the resolution authorizing County of Tulare to join the California First program. With that, I conclude my presentation.
Any questions from board members? Okay, I will open the public hearing. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak to this item? Okay, seeing no one, I will close the public hearing, bring it back to the board for action and questions to comment. Okay, we have a motion by Supervisor Worley and a second by Supervisor Cox to approve this request. Please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Mike.
Thank you.
All right. That concludes our timed items portion of our meeting. We will now move on to the untimed portion of our agenda. Item 38 is a request from the Health and Human Services Agency to approve the personnel resolution to add one deputy director of Human Resources Division and delete one division manager of Human Resources Division. Dr. Dirksen.
Good morning, Chairman Vanderpool, members of the board, Mr. Russo and Ms. Roberts. We are specifically requesting today to make several changes to our Human Resources Division. Those include the addition of a deputy director position, the deletion of the current division manager position, the approval of a new job description for the deputy director position, and then, obviously, the budget adjustment form. The request of the board is consistent with recommendations from a review and analysis we took up approximately a year ago. We looked at business processes, workflow history, resource allocation, et cetera, and it's also reflective of our continued effort to improve organizational performance and enhancement at all levels of the organization, including service delivery to our own employees. I should also just add, by way of closing, before I take questions, that the recent division manager has retired, and so, at least from my particular perch and perspective, it's perhaps a timely request to make that change. So, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions from board members? Any questions from members of the public? Seeing none, this is a board item for action.
Move approval.
We have a motion by Supervisor Ashida, a second by Supervisor Ennis. Please vote. Motion passes unanimously. See what happens when you don't bring us fees?
Yeah, I was going to say, it's much easier than environmental health.
Thanks. Appreciate it, Dr. Dirksen.
Thank you very much.
Have a great day. Next, we're going to move on to item 39, a request from Resource Management Agency to approve the submission of the grant application to the California Access Program for roadway improvements to Success Valley Drive.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Reed Shanky. I'm an engineer with the Resource Management Agency. I'll just real quickly go over a new funding, federal funding source for transportation improvement projects, at the end of which I'll make a request for your authorization to submit a grant for this program. This new program is the California Access Program. It's established as part of MAP 21, which is federal legislation that was enacted by Congress about a year ago. Unlike the majority of our county federally funded projects, this project is implemented and administered by Central Federal Lands Highway Division, which is part of FHWA, Department of Transportation. Majority of our other projects are administered through Caltrans, so this is a little bit different here. Federal highways will use, will be forming a transportation improvement program list, and they will be designing and constructing, so they'll be responsible for this project. These projects will be for, are the local agencies are the potential recipients for these fundings. So, the intent of this project, or this program, is to enhance or make improvements to projects or facilities that provide access or are adjacent to federal lands. The funding requires a about 11 and a half percent local match, and the emphasis is on high-use federal recreational sites or economic generators. These projects will be evaluated by the Federal Highways Division based on the items shown here, some of which are access, which would be providing alternative modes of transportation like bike lanes, that sort of thing, safety, facility condition, and then, a big one is coordination with the Federal Lands Agency, or the property owner that is adjacent to our facility. The process we went through to identify which project we wanted to submit for application for this program was a fairly, it was a multi-step process, but it wasn't too complicated. We first off identified all the various federal land management agencies in Tulare County. These include the obvious sources, like National Park Service, US Forest Service, but some of the less obvious would be like the BLM, US Fish and Wildlife, and US Army Corps of Engineers, which operates and maintains Lake Success, Lake Kewee. Once we identified the federal lands, we looked at the different facilities that were adjacent to these properties, and then, we narrowed that list down to facilities that were in need of improvements. We narrowed down this list with a consultation with our various RMA departments and also with the various federal lands agencies that were owning those adjacent properties to determine what their level of support would be. After going through that list, we narrowed it down to about four projects here, shown here, and I'll go into a little bit more detail on the next slides. First potential project was Success Valley Drive. This is in between State Route 190 and the Tulie Recreation Area at Lake Success. The federal land there is operated by the Army Corps of Engineers, and this is a little less than a quarter-mile stretch of road that provides access for camping and then also lake access. Second project, or potential project, would be Mountain Road 99, otherwise known as the Kern River Highway. This is a county facility that runs just north of Kernville at the county line up to Johnsondale. It's in US Forest Service land, but it is a county facility. It's about 21 miles of roadway, but the facility itself needs a little over 10 miles or so of improvements, either overlays or reconstructions, maybe some shoulder widens there. Third project, or potential project, would have been, or was, the Mountain Road 375A. This is Mineral King Drive going up from State Route 198 near Three Rivers to the Mineral King entrance of Sequoia Park. It's a narrow, call it maybe a one and a half lane road. Needs some pretty significant improvements as far as reconstruction, just to relay maintenance issues that are there, and that federal land is administered by the National Park Service. The fourth project was the kind of iconic Mineral King Bridge over the Kewee River. It is on the Mineral King Drive as well, provides access to the national park, the Mineral King entrance there. We decided, after a little bit of discussion, to remove this project from the list because it's currently programmed to be reconstructed or rehabilitated as part of the county's highway bridge program, which is a federally funded program, similar local match, similar constraints there, but we would be the, more of a lead agency on that one. We would have more design decisions and more input versus with this California Access program. We've currently scheduled this one for rehabilitation in about four years, so we took this off the list. The resulting list here shows the three projects, Success Valley Drive, Kern River Highway, and Mineral King Drive. You can see briefly what the scope of the project is and what the usage is. ADT is average daily traffic, so you get between 200 and 500 vehicles crossing these roadways. The significant issue or most telling point of this slide is the cost. The two on the bottom are fairly long stretches and thus fairly high dollar, whereas Success Valley Drive is about a quarter-mile, and preliminary cost estimates have it a little bit under $300,000. The local match there would be that $33,000. So, that's kind of the distinguishing factor between the three. We selected, or are hoping to select and propose to you submitting the Success Valley Drive project as part of this grant proposal. We feel it has the highest benefit-cost ratio of the three various projects. It's got the most use by county residents. For example, the Kern River Highway, a lot of the access there is from residents or businesses in Kernville, which is in Kern County there. So, the Success Valley Drive is centrally located within the county here. It's got year-round use. Mineral King Road is more or less seasonal. The gates for the Mineral King entrance at the national park close during winter, snowfall from about October to May. Got the lowest county cost, and we feel it's the highest probability for selection by these grant evaluators. Little detail about the Success Valley Drive project. It's currently about 20 feet wide, which is narrower than what standard roadways for this type of facility would be. We propose to widen it to 32 feet, which would include two four-foot bike lanes on either side of the road there, reconstruct the road base and the road surface, and install facility signage and possibly landscaping to improve the aesthetics and the visibility of that facility, which would also benefit the Army Corps here. The estimated cost, again, is about $288,000, $33,000 of which would be local funds, and at this point, we're proposing that it would be, that that money would be coming out of the roads fund. So, that's kind of just a brief discussion of the project there. And a couple pictures, you can see the campsite right adjacent to the road, and the current status of the road is pretty bad. It's pretty beaten up. The next steps of this project is, with your approval, we'll submit the grant application. It's actually due today by midnight. If the project is selected for the improvement program, the county and the federal lands will establish a detailed scope, budget, and work agreement, at which point, they will take off running with it and design, and then, implement by constructing the project with county oversight. Their stated goals are to complete these projects that are on this tip within the next five to seven years, so it could be two years, three years, it could be as many as seven years out. With that, if you have any questions, I'm open to that, and otherwise, the request is on the board here.
Supervisor Ashida.
I have a question. On Success Valley Drive project, it says lowest county cost 11.5% match from road funds. What's the match on the other projects?
The, this program requires an 11.5% match for all the projects, so if you look at the table here, we're looking at $1.2 million or $1.4 million for the other two projects.
Question I have is, if we have projects that are in the million-dollar range, and we only have 11% match, why aren't we going after the larger projects? These, generally, we're looking at 20%, 25% matches on all these other programs.
The 11.47% match is, there's, it's either that or a 20% match with most federal-funded transportation programs. So, you're right, this is on the lower scale there. We felt that, being that this is a new program, we wanted to not dive in headfirst, per se, and the $1.2 million of these other two projects potentially create a funding issue because we hadn't had those in our previous budgets. Potentially, Measure R would be a source of that funding, but we would have to go to them to request that, and that sort of amount wasn't necessarily on their budget as well.
You know, if you look at, let's say, Mineral King Road Drive, if you commit to that project 12.3 million, does that mean it has to reach all the way to the gates of the park? Or did we do a portion of that road?
We can do a portion. This, this process involves, once we're selected for the improvement program, discussions with federal highways as far as developing the scope of that project. What this, for the Mineral King Road, the 10.5 million project includes about five miles of overlay and two miles of widening. That isn't the entire length of the project. That's kind of the worst of the worst there.
Because we have residents on that park.
Yeah, particularly on the lower section of that road.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but it's very possible that, because this could happen anywhere from two to seven years, there would be multiple trips to Washington required, and if that's the case, I'd nominate sending Supervisor Ashida for those trips. He enjoys it there.
I think they're administrator, they're administered out of Colorado, so...
The other question I have, mainly, it's too late. At this point in time, we filed tonight by midnight... At this point in time, we filed tonight by midnight on this project. Is there any backfill coming in the future?
There's potential. Once they identify, they've got a certain amount of budget, and I think it's somewhere in the realm of $300 million for the state of California. So there is potential that if they don't get enough projects submitted, then they would do a second round to increase or ask for additional projects.
Well, I'm just rather disappointed that's all we're asking for.
Supervisor Worley.
Well, I, I was gonna kid you and say, do you have three different applications ready to go so we can pick among the two, choose the three? I'm just joking, because I'm sure that's not the case. But I do kind of echo Supervisor Ashida's comments, which is, I wish we had something maybe in between, you know, a $300,000 project and an 11 or 12 million project. This is a competitive bid process, correct? And you just made the comment, there's like 300 million allocated for California, I think you said. Personally, and time, of course, is of the essence here. But if we get another shot at this, I'd rather us try to get more. Anytime you can get somebody else to pay for 89% of your project, usually you want to try to get the most of it you possibly can. And then, and since we have a three-to-five-year period, a window, to work out the finances of it, we could, we could be looking. I just turned to Supervisor Cox here, where you're talking about a bicycle lane. Well, part of Measure R is for bicycle lanes. I mean, so we could be looking at funding sources that could help pay for these, some of these expenses, some of our match that would come, not necessarily have our road fund. But the idea that you can get, again, a 10 or 12 million dollars' worth of work done and only have to come up with a $1.2 million, I realize that's a lot of money, but it's a lot of roadwork done at the same time. And I think that's, as we look at Measure R, that's what we've been able to do, is, is get more of other people to pay for projects in our county with, with our matching sum. And, because otherwise, if we're gonna go out there and fix these roads ourselves, they aren't gonna ever get done. Again, in Pete's lifetime, probably. So anyway, I, I think the concept going forward, I realize today's, is, we don't really have that option. But going forward, I'd like for us to maybe, if we have opportunity, look at bigger projects and then work on the financing part of it, given the fact we don't have to cover all of it one time. Right? Three to five years, something like that? Or five to seven years, something like that?
Part of the, the evaluation criteria is they're more willing to fund or add to the list projects that already have funding in place.
Okay, and those are some of the things I was, you know, I mean, we didn't get all that. My assumption was, when we thought this had the highest rate of being successful, maybe the other part was not gonna be successful because we asked for so much money, or we didn't have the match in hand, or something of that, of that nature. And you, you have more access to that information than we have. But, but I think you understand, I believe, the policy of the Board here, whenever we can get, like I said, someone else to pay for almost 90% of a project, we want to try to get, you know, the most we possibly can and work out the finances of it some other way.
Absolutely. I think part of the other factor, looking at that cost-benefit, was, these are, you know, we've got 200 ADT on a lot of these facilities. And to look at that benefit-cost analysis versus potentially other projects that other agencies are submitting, these may fall lower on the scale there.
Well, and I, hopefully, Mr. Raper will be looking a little bit more closely at the BLM land out by Alpa after the drive out there to see the solar farm that he took last week. Just making that plug. Go ahead, Supervisor Cox.
I agree with, I think we aimed a little bit low. And nothing being your fault here, a concern I have is, this happens to us a lot. We get left out of the, the pre-thought process, looking at the, you know, entire list. You narrowed your list down to four. Was it 20? Was it 30? You know, I think this Board ought to have a chance to look at the, the list of 30 and have early input so that when you get here, you know, we don't beat you up. But I think we did aim awful low on this, and I would like to see, in the future, if we have this opportunity, bring it to us as soon as you can. Let us look at the big list, give you some feedback, and then come back with a narrowed list.
Absolutely.
Good, Mr. Chairman. But I will say that this road is much needed in the success, and these improvements will make it a lot, especially with maybe the restrictions coming off the dam. You're gonna see a lot more people using this road. So this is much needed for that area.
That's great.
It's a quarter-mile long.
It's a good works fund.
Is that, is that the form of, is that the form of a motion, Supervisor Ennis?
Yeah, that would be a motion.
Okay, so there's a motion for approval from Supervisor Ennis, a second from Supervisor Worley, please vote. Hey, see, even when you're not raising fees, it can be difficult at times, so. Just know we don't discriminate. Next, we're gonna take up our final item on our open session agenda, and that's item number 40, a request from Resource Management Agency to authorize the extension of the closure of the Kennedy Meadows Transfer Station to June 30th, 2013. Another one. Go ahead, Denise.
Another. Good morning, Board, CAO, and Council. Denise Aiken, CAO Office. Your Board, since August 28th of 2012, has taken numerous actions regarding this transfer station. First, authorizing its closure and then authorizing extensions to the closure date. The most recent was on April 2nd, where your Board authorized closure effective 30 days, which would be this Thursday. Since the August 28th meeting, and again, since the April 2nd meeting, staff has been working diligently with the concerned residents of Kennedy Meadows to identify a viable, effective solution for their solid waste needs. On April 12th, 2013, staff met with the Kennedy Meadows Community Committee, that was selected back in October at their original community meeting, to discuss the fee that was going to be applied to their tax roll, a land use fee. That fee was presented to the committee as about $20 per month per residential parcel, which equates to about $240 a year. The committee was supportive of the fee. However, they identified some parcels that they felt were developed that were benefiting from the transfer station and that should also pay the land use fee. And so staff is working to identify additional parcels. We have identified a timeline. So currently, we're using well logs to identify domestic wells and comparing that to the parcel list we got from the Assessor's Office to identify missing parcels. We're also using records from the Ducor Telephone Company, assuming if they get telephone service at the parcel, they most likely are also using the transfer station. And then we will hold a community meeting on May 18th, 2013, to determine the full community support. Coming back to your Board on May 21st, to schedule a public hearing for July 16th, at which you will hear the Prop 218 protest process to establish the land use fee. Therefore, we're requesting an extension to July 17th, the day after the public hearing, to extend the closure. And I will take any comments or questions?
Any comments or questions?
Well, I just got one comment. I mean, we've, we've talked, and we've had conference calls with these folks, and I think that they're, I think we're headed in the right direction now. And I think we just need to give them this chance to put it on their tax rolls and pay for it.
Supervisor Cox.
How much have we collected in our tree box?
We're collecting about $200 a month from the box.
What does it cost us per month?
It's costing in the neighborhood of, the operations of just the transfer station is about $20,000 a year, so divided by 12, about a couple thousand a year, a month.
Sounds like transit.
We're asking them to also, in the part land use fee, we're asking them to also cover the environmental costs of the site. So it would be full-cost recovery.
All right. Is that the form of a motion I hear down there, Supervisor Ennis?
I would make a motion to delay the.
Supervisor Ashida, would you like to comment?
Now, before I second this, I want to date definitive to where they come up with an agreement. Because in that staff report, it says they've recognized parcels that weren't included in the list. Well, hell, that list can go on for the next five years, trying to determine who's gonna be assessed and not assessed. So there needs to be a date certain with additions to the assessment as needed. But don't go through this period of trying to determine who's gonna be assessed for the next five years.
So, May 18th.
Analysis?
Yeah, May 18th would have that, that list. And so, May 21st, when I come, you'll be able to, to see some, some concrete action. And at that time, you can either decide to close it if they won't support it or decide to let that process go forward.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, but we have one additional comment before we vote.
One last question, two-part. What's the cost of the election, of the vote, and who's gonna pay for it?
The Solid Waste Division will pay for it, and it would be the cost of mailing out the 200 and some notices.
General fund.
No, 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 Solid Waste Enterprise Fund. Tipping fee, many.
Okay, so we have a motion by Supervisor Ennis, a second by Supervisor Ashida, please vote.
Although, Mr. Trump, I did consider thinking we should just close the facility. It might help facilitate the vote outcome.
Yeah, it might speed it up.
That 30-day notice certainly.
All right, well, that concludes our open portion of our Board of Supervisors meeting today. Council, do we have need for a closed session?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we do have need for closed session. It's Items A, B, and D, as listed on your agenda. We are going to cancel Item C. I do not expect to report out.
Okay, that sounds good. Thank you, everyone, for attending today's meeting, and hope everyone has a great week. This meeting is adjourned. Hey, Michelle. Michelle.
Perfect. You can just put this spreadsheet between, that would be great for me.
Yeah, if I can find the clicker.
Thank you.